Thank you for getting the numbers that we requested, Tony. Did any of you at this table ever say that we were going to vote on getting out of the cooperative?
No.
Raise your hand if you did. I don't know why that rumor was put out there and shame on whoever did because it got a whole lot of people excited for absolutely nothing. There was only one person who I saw in the emails say stop, hold on, and yet even after that, people still continue to send the emails about us. It's kind of disturbing. All that's happening here is that we're looking into the cooperative and the numbers because that's our job. We haven't been doing our due diligence when it comes to athletic liaison like we do on finance and we do on our curriculum and whatever we do on the other committees. And that's why we're doing this. I just think that it's pretty closed minded of people to make decisions and make judgments about anything without getting all of the facts. And that's why we're doing this. And I, like I said, Tony, I appreciate you getting the numbers. But I kind of like to go over them just to make sure that we got everything right. And there was one disturbing thing in the business downtown that somebody had put up a petition about not getting out of the cooperative. And not only was that wrong, but they also included what the, and we were academic.
They said we were combined financially, academically, and athletically.
Yeah.
Well, that's incorrect. We are not academically together. So for people to start all that stuff, it's very disturbing.
And I think when see, people see the, the passion that I have about this subject has nothing to do with that other than it's my passion for this community and this school. And there's been talk about how they, they don't feel like, especially Chris and I, give the backing to the liaison that we should. When have we ever, ever said no to anything? Uniforms, blocking sleds, baseball equipment. We have always, always backed everything that's ever been asked of us. And it's kind of disturbing when I hear people say that. That doesn't mean that eventually someday I would like to see us out of the cooperative, but we are not out of the cooperative and we're not voting for it. But that's just my opinion. So to the numbers. The nine through twelve you have in front of you too. This number of students at Moose Lake and Willow River, this is the one where it talks about. Like the one you have for grade nine. Boys fourteen, girls sixteen, so there's thirty altogether. So then you go down that thirty, forty, thirty-seven, twenty-one, that's where it comes up with a hundred and one. Or it's actually more than a hundred and one. Because a hundred and one is what's counted for our MSHSL numbers for, because of free and reduced, right?
I guess I don't, I'm not following what you're asking.
They actually, they have an enrollment of a hundred and twenty.
You're not, I don't have those numbers. I thought you had this number.
They have an enrollment of a hundred and twenty-eight kids according to this. One, it counts for one hundred and one because of the, the free and reduced. Our enrollment counts is twelve, eighteen, nineteen, zero, one, five, ten, thirteen, is one hundred and eighty-nine, and we count one eighty-four.
One seventy-four now.
One seventy-four.
Going into next fall. And Willow's at one oh nine.
And they're up to one oh nine now.
Right. And that is all based on, part of it's based on free and reduced lunch. The high school league has a formula that, you know, just to put it plainly, a free and reduced lunch kid only counts as sixty percent. Because they have legitimate data that states that free and reduced lunch kids do not participate as much as others. So just for fun numbers, say Moose Lake has two hundred kids in the building nine through twelve. And we have a twenty-five percent free and reduced rate, which is fifty kids. They'll then subtract forty percent away from that to get our number to around one eighty. And that's kind of where we've been hovering for.
Right.
Six years, give or take. And that's about what our kid count is, right? About two hundred, give or take. And it just depends on, they pull the numbers every two years. In the fall, well, actually they pull them in March. They pull them in the fall and in March, I believe. And then right from MDE, if we have two hundred and nine kids and fifty-two of them are free and reduced, then they apply the formula. And that's where our number comes from.
With that one seventy-four or one seventy-five next year?
One seventy-four.
One seventy-four, that lasts for two years.
Two years, yeah.
And did that number slide for the bottom one twenty-five, the middle one twenty-five, and then?
Slides all the time, yeah.
Okay, so what changes next year for us?
Only volleyball.
And we go down to single A?
Yes. And the main reason for that is, is they, the legislation passed in the fall, or I should say a special session. What is the official term? Wasn't legislated, that's wrong. I can't think of the term, but they decided, somebody pushed through that, all these cooperatives that they're counting a hundred percent of every school's enrollment just isn't fair. Because for instance. Well, let's say Barnum was triple their size and they couldn't field a cross-country team, but they really badly wanted one and we took them on. Now we're going up into double A because we're choosing to take them on when really they're sending two kids to us. So they came up with a new formula that the biggest school gets counted as one hundred percent. And then all subsequent schools get fifty percent of their already free and reduced lunch number. So right now Moose Lake is counting for one seventy-four and Willow River is counting for fifty-five. So our new enrollment number starting next fall for sports specifically is two twenty-nine. Two years ago it was two eighty-five, something like that.
What was ours before this? Ours stays the same.
Yeah, yeah, we just went down a little bit, just, and maybe we have more free and reduced lunch kids that changed that number, or we're just down ten kids. Depending on the situation.
Okay, and then to the participation numbers. This is the thing that I wanted to see you before, you know, get you wholly on email or anything, because I, I'm, I want to make sure these numbers are right. But this is just for the number of students that could be playing in a sport. And, and this is what I'd like you to verify. I can send it to you after talking to you, or you can write it down now or whatever. But it looks to me like this, in the softball and baseball for the spring sports. Out of the thirty kids from Willow, five are playing softball and baseball for the ninth grade.
I know, it's like, oh, they have. Which year are you looking at?
Um, no, I'm sorry, I'm going off of this one again.
Yeah.
The one that they had given us for the numbers.
Sure.
So if you look at the ninth grade.
Ninth grade softball, baseball, Willow River has three combined people. That's what I have. Two in baseball and one in softball.
And that's for this ninth grade?
This, this year's ninth grade.
So it's three.
Three total.
I think it's you got the latest number because one of them quit.
No, this is the same number that you have though on that sheet. Unless, oh, you didn't.
Cause I had five. For the nine, this is nine through twelve. So you're saying there's three ninth graders playing softball, baseball?
Softball and baseball combined for Willow River.
How many for Willow combined are playing in tenth grade?
Six.
Eleventh grade softball, baseball?
Seven.
And twelfth grade?
One.
That's actually one, one senior playing softball, baseball. So, okay, at Moose Lake, out of the senior class, there's eligible forty-seven, how many are playing softball and baseball?
Six.
And junior?
Seven.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, the sophomores.
Sophomores is twelve.
And juniors is seven?
The juniors is seven and the ninth grade is five.
Ninth grade is five, not six?
Correct.
And the seniors?
Uh, six.
And track? Just run down all those numbers, you know, quick, uh, ninth grade?
Ninth is two.
Ten.
Tenth is two. Eleventh is seven. And zero seniors.
And, uh, Moose Lake's?
Eight, thirteen, eight, eleven.
And golf?
Uh.
Let's do boys first.
I didn't split them.
You didn't?
I just put it all together. And tracks all together as well.
Do you know?
I can pull it up, yeah.
You can get the full numbers instead from now.
Um, golf down the board, seventh grade, or ninth grade zero, tenth grade zero, eleventh grade zero, senior one. And then Moose Lake is two, 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 and three for seniors.
So there's one golfer in ninth grades for Willow River, two twelve?
Correct.
We have five, seven, nine. All boys and girls.
All boys and girls. And I can give you that breakdown in just a second.
Are any of these separated from baseball or not?
No, we just, we said.
So baseball this year, did we put it together and then, but did all the boys, we come with the boys and the girls to softball?
Well, yeah, when I gave you that total number.
But for baseball, it's two from Willow in ninth grade. Tenth grade two.
Yeah.
Eleventh grade four, seniors zero.
Yeah.
And then Moose Lake, it's four, nine, four, and three for twenty.
Correct.
What?
And then the percentages are right underneath that too, yeah.
So with those numbers, actually there's one less in baseball, but we'll just come up with that now. There's twenty-eight percent that are from Willow and twenty-one in track and field, two combined.
Yeah.
Golf, there's ten percent. We go over to basketball. It's seventy-five percent us, twenty-five percent them, in boys. And then sixty-four point two for us and thirty-five point seven for them in girls' basketball. That's with five seniors for them and nine for us. So there'll be a lot of underclassmen next year.
Correct.
Cross-country.
No, wait, that's, that's the total. Sorry, you're reading that. We lose two senior girls from Moose and none from Willow. You were looking at the totals when you said nine and five, that's the total program.
Oh, it's below.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause they had, they had zero seniors.
Correct.
We had two.
Yeah.
So they have five played and we had?
Nine.
Nine.
From nine through twelve, yeah. And so some eighth graders and seventh graders were pulled up for JV this year, and varsity for them.
Cross-country, they had two kids running out of our, out of twenty-eight. And that was, there was one boy and one girl?
Correct.
When I got the stuff from the coach before, it was one girl. Did one drop out that we don't know about?
No, the one boy goes to school there, the other girl's actually home schooled, but resides in their district. So she pays fees and has to fill paperwork out through their school. I gotta count them though.
Remind you, wait, let it count both of them then. Does he only have one on the, on his thing?
And see, there might, he might have put home next to it, cause he doesn't know. He doesn't know where they reside per se. We have a home school kid, sometimes you don't ask, but where are you paying your fees or who? I do, I mean, on my end, I'm double checking, cause if it's one of my kids, or I should say a Moose Lake district kid, I gotta make sure they're eligible.
Right.
But this particular, so then his, his records would have been accurate and what he probably, what he knew. I have the golf if you're ready. So nine through twelve, Moose Lake has five boys. And then there's, the boy is a Willow River student.
What's that?
The boy is a.
And one Willow.
One Willow for boys. And then girls, nine through twelve, we have four girls out for golf and they're all Moose Lake.
And in volleyball. There's two, two, one, and zero from Willow, going from nine up. And there's five, seven, four, five for Moose Lake. And that makes nineteen percent of the team. From Willow. And eight percent from Moose Lake. And this past year, there's four, six, seven, two in football. And nine, nine, eight, and nine in football for Moose Lake. The first one was Willow, the second was Moose Lake. And that looks like it's almost the highest except for girls' basketball. Softball.
Softball and basketball.
Softball, girls', basketball.
And football would be their three highest percentage.
And we had talked a little bit earlier about these numbers, like we count one eighty-four, they count one oh one. And it'll actually be a little bit lower on their part before. So that sixty-five percent is coming for us and thirty-five percent is coming for them.
You're going to averages across?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, averages across the board is, that's only in those three sports. Thirty-five percent. Yeah, the average is right to the right.
Uh, what, how did I put this? The, if you have the enrollments.
Oh, if you have the enrollments. It comes out sixty-five, thirty-five.
Right, they should have thirty-five percent. For all intents and purposes, thirty-five percent of the teams should be Willow kids and sixty-five percent at least should be Moose Lake.
Based on strictly the.
On the numbers.
The numbers that we, that the Minnesota state has.
From the school.
Correct.
Okay. And then I did the numbers and it seems like there are certainly a lot more kids from Moose Lake out of each class playing in sports than in Willow. For percentage wise. That's what I was seeing.
I think he sent you the, the actual grade enrollment numbers. I haven't seen that yet, so, but you're probably accurate.
Where are we gonna be at for the next two years? You know, like, we've been lucky in football lately because we've been at the top of the double A just so much, so close to having to go three A.
Right.
Where will we be at next year besides volleyball finally dropping down to where we probably should be? Where would we be at in the other ones when it comes to almost getting into three A or staying in two A?
Yeah, so the numbers shift every two years, but not a lot. It's five, ten at the maximum. So example, football. The cap for dou, for double A is three hundred and ten. So we used to be at two eighty-five, so you could argue we were kind of close. Now we're at two twenty-nine, so we're not close at all. You know, we're in the bottom third.
Where does the cutoff for single A?
Uh, you have to be under two oh two. So it'd be two oh one and below.
One seventy-five is seven PM, sorry.
One seventy-four is our new number. Yeah.
And then, uh, we'll go backwards. Volleyball is, is single A.
Yeah.
How far are we out of that one or into it?
Cause it's a three-class system, it's completely different numbers. Two forty-four and below are in class A. So we're fifteen kids away. But before, you know, when we were calculating at two eighty-five, that put us on the very low end. Cause double A, the, the, the classification breakdown goes from two forty-five to seven eighty-nine. So we were sitting at two eighty-five, three hundred for five of the last decade.
So it's two forty-four now for double A.
And, and two forty-four and lower is A.
And lower.
Yeah.
And again, we're at one seventy-four.
Two twenty-nine.
I mean, two, geez, I got that one wrong again. We're at two twenty-nine?
Two twenty-nine for the next two years.
So football, we're right on?
No, football, we're right in the middle. It's two oh two to, to three ten. So I guess bottom third, not really in the middle, but.
And how about, uh, cross-country's A?
Cross-country's not close, cause it's five forty-five and under, because there's only two classes.
Girls' basketball?
Girls' basketball is.
And the boys are same, right?
They're not.
They aren't?
No, because there are a different number of teams. So the girls cutoff for class two A is any school with two oh two to five fifty-four.
For double A?
That's double A. And then there must be one school difference that shifted somebody up. And for boys' basketball, it's two oh four to five fifty-four. So a difference of two kids, but that, what that would mean is that some team doesn't exist. They don't have girls' basketball or something. Or maybe, maybe it's probably a private school, you're probably right, an extra boys-only private school or extra girls-only private school.
How about golf?
Golf, boys cutoff for double A. Is two twenty-five to seven ninety-eight.
And we're two twenty-nine.
We're two twenty-nine.
And this is one of the things that we question, we might as well talk about it now, is they have one kid. And because of one kid, it puts us into double A, cause we count both of theirs and ours together.
That would be an accurate statement.
And the girls?
Two sixteen to seven ninety-eight. Same thing, couple of programs don't exist. I think like, Malax has boys' golf and they don't have girls' golf, and they have girls' track to offset it.
And track and field will, will obviously stay A, right?
Yeah, it's the same as cross-country, it's five forty-five and under.
For single A?
Baseball's the exact, exact same as girls' basketball. It's two oh two to five fifty-four, just in double A.
Boys' baseball's two oh two.
To five fifty-four. And softball is two ten to five sixty-eight. So the high school league just looks at the total number and depending on how big the class is. It's a four-class system for like basketball. They take the top sixty-four, the next sixty-four. They take all the rest of the teams and divide them in half. The upper half are in double A, the lower half are in, in single A. For a sport like volleyball, where there's only three classes, they take the top. Ninety-six, then the next one twenty-eight, and then the remainder fall into class A. And football's really odd. So they take the largest thirty-two for six double A, then they go forty-eight, then they go forty-eight, then triple A is fifty-four. Then class one A. And two A are divided equally, but that must mean they pull the nine man out first.
Sure.
Cause then it just says the nine man equals nine man.
Right.
So they must pull the top thirty-two and the bottom nine man, or they have a cutoff number, or. I don't know how they do it.
It used to be though, they didn't divide that number in half. They would, in those other ones we were talking about, didn't they go another one twenty-five? And then the rest, like at, I think it was basketball, you said sixty-four, then?
Oh, no, I said that backwards. So the, here's an inequity then. Baseball, four-class system, they go sixty-four, sixty-four, divide A and double A in half. Basketball, I just read the wrong one. They go sixty-four, sixty-four, one twenty-eight, and then the remainder.
Right.
Probably because there are a lot more basketball teams. And baseball, they, I'm guessing, there's more basketball than there is. I actually can probably figure that out.
And baseball was even closer, I think it was before, to being single A before the, this change?
Well, we just went to a four-class system. Last year was the first year in a four-class system. And why they chose that route instead of the basketball route, again, I think it really comes down to the number of participating schools. If they hit a cap. Then they decide to divide the last two equally rather than do the one twenty-eight.
I think we'll have to compile this so that we can give it to the board for just discussion purposes alone. Just so that we all are clear about the numbers. I think one of the most disconcerting is golf.
I agree, I agree, that's the closest. And what would happen if we tried to petition down?
Because there's only one for one school.
So we're penalized because of that, but we've never tried to petition down.
No. That would probably be our rationale. We understand in other sports, the percentage is a lot closer, but in this particular sport.
Yeah, cause last year there was zero, the year before that there was two, the year before that was four, and the year before that was zero.
For Willow kids?
Yeah. It, 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 that, that just doesn't seem smart. Or on the surface, looking at it, why we would have Moose Lake, cause it is Moose Lake, except for now this year one, but before that, like I said, zeros. Why in the world were we not petitioning or talking about having our kids play single A, cause that's what we would be?
You know, one of the.
And I know Willow talks about an opportunity to be able to have them play. But three kids over the last five years. It's, doesn't seem that's enough for us to agree.
The unfortunate thing is, just look at our girls' team right now, who actually still has a chance to go to state this year. They're playing very well. They couldn't field a team without the Willow River girl.
That's the one?
Yeah.
In double A?
No, we only, if we win on our own, we barely could field a varsity team.
We would be in single A.
We would be in single A, but then you're not going to state as a team if you can't put a team in sections. You can put three individuals or four individuals. I mean, if our numbers were at twenty and theirs were at zero, then we'd have a serious conversation, cause now we're fielding a team, maybe we're not using their kids, but. And maybe this is an odd year, but for the last three or four years, we've barely fielded a varsity girls' team. We have three or four really good, three really good individuals.
If you petition though, you don't have to.
Correct.
Get rid of anybody from Willow. Can you check on that before the meeting on Monday?
I can't petition for two years. Yeah, we had that opportunity in March, when the new classifications come up.
Hence why we should meet more often. And to talk about these things. And shame on us for not doing it for the last thirty years to talk about just the numbers or what's going on, how much we pay, which we'll get into next. And those kind of numbers, cause I think it's, the, the public should know about it. And they should get a chance to be able to, you know, give us their insight of what they think of those numbers. I, that, it's, that's too bad, really. Anything else on the numbers you guys?
As a new member, I do, many of these are very interesting.
So I, I think, maybe we'll talk about the, getting together the percentages and the numbers that we just talked about, so it's easy to lay out and stuff for members. Bob, this is kind of for you, Wayne, we've, I'm sure they had Linda here, but, um, in the past year, is this, does this mi, minus the transportation. These are the numbers on top that's paid.
Yeah.
The first question I'm gonna have somebody ask me is, is why do we pay sixteen thousand dollars more than Willow for the sports in this cooperative?
Okay.
What's the reason?
Well, it's because of the formula we came up with on our contract. So we split it fifty-fifty, and then after that, it's split again, uh, based on the number of students you have. But that's in the contract that we have, the cooperative contract.
And that's the part that's renewed or looked at, should be looked at every couple, two years?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it is.
And you've changed that over the years, so that's not a thing that hasn't been changed in the past.
Did you guys look at it two years ago?
Just to clarify, to make easy numbers, if, if our budget was two hundred thousand, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm right. The first hundred thousand, we split right down the middle. They pay fifty thousand, we pay fifty thousand, and they take the last hundred thousand and based on enrollment, there's a formula of that. And we're end up, we end up paying a larger share of that.
Have we been changing that every two years?
Not every two years, but you have updated it relatively recently.
Yeah, I think we did.
I think that should look, that we look at it every two years, but I also think that if we have another school that has fifty percent of the say in sports. And we have fifty percent of a school that has a say in sports. Regardless, because we're playing in these classes, because both schools are together, it should be right down the middle.
Right, and you could bring that up at liaison, I mean, that's.
Well, I think we could bring up to the board, something to talk about.
For, for.
For the board.
Twenty-second, yeah, okay.
And then the transportation, can you explain that to me, what this means?
Each school pays their own transportation. So you're in char, you're in charge of a particular sport, you pay for that sport. Uh, you were asking the other time about, uh, there is an athletic bus that comes from Willow. And then we do the, um, you know, football practice bus, those two are separate. We don't, they do that, we do our football practice. Every, but, every sport that you're in charge of, you as a school pay for the transportation of that sport.
And then whose infinite wisdom was that decided that way?
Is that accurate?
We pay forty-six thousand, they pay thirty thousand for transportation. Why was that?
Well, the problem is, is that, um, last, this was based off fifteen sixteen, cause it was a full year. And we figured, you want to see the full year. Willow was having problems with the buses. So we took over a lot more busing last year. Now this year Willow's taking on more busing to even it out.
So the difference of sixteen thousand dollars. So the difference of sixteen thousand dollars will be, will have been made up this year?
Yeah, I hope so, you can ask for those numbers again and we'll look.
Have those numbers always been even pretty much the other years, or have we paid more or?
I don't know the answer to that, I hope the answer is it's been even.
Based on what I know, so I don't know if that's accurate, that they pay for their sport. I do the fall bus schedule, which is cross-country, football, volleyball, all levels, which we're one hundred percent cooperative for. And I split the trips right down the middle. Okay, we're, it's a north trip, it makes sense, Willow goes to two harbors. Moose Lake bus picks up Moose kids and goes down to Pine City for volleyball. I'll look at when cross-country goes to Cook County, the first time, send a Willow bus, the second time they go to Cook County, we send a Moose bus. And so we offset it all the time, so in that fifteen sixteen year, they ran out of drivers. In the middle of the winter and into the spring, and we picked up a heavy load, and then this past fall, they took a ton of trips. Comparative, will it come out to sixteen thousand? I don't know. And then the other question I actually brought to Bob, I don't know what that is, do we pay our drivers more than they pay theirs? So the numbers might not ever be equal, if we have higher drivers rates by two dollars an hour, that makes a big difference, even if we take fifty fifty trips. We're paying more for the driver, potentially, I don't know what their rate is, so I don't know that the numbers can ever be equal, but. I'd like to think that I'm very, I don't punch mileage in and make it that accurate, but when I see a long trip, I go, okay, next long trip should go to the other bus. And offset it, but then we also wanna pay attention to again, not wasting empty buses, I don't want a Moose Lake bus to drive down to Willow, pick one kid up. Drive up to Moose Lake, pick the rest of them up on a northern trip, if we can help it. The problem with that is, is we go northern about eighty-five percent of the time. But we offset, so I offset all fall and then basketball trips. Hockey, we take all on our own, because we run that by ourselves, and then in the spring, uh, Dave takes care of the spring schedule, he does the same thing, it's just split right down the middle. Across all four sports.
Are you, are you the AD of just Moose Lake sports that we take care of?
Yes and no, I mean, I manage all the sports that we take care of, but then I'm also managing every kid that plays every sport to make sure they're eligible. Make sure their fees are paid, make sure they have their paperwork in.
Dave does a tool, right?
For his kids, yeah.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yep.
So you take care of our kids and make sure that they're eligible all the way through the, and then you take care of?
So a coach sends both of us our rosters, I take the Moose Lake kids, get them cleared to play, he takes the Willow River kids. And then if it just happens to be a Willow River sport, honestly, the only thing they do is schedule. Nothing else matters, and when they put the purchases through their building, that's really all it means to hope, to administer a sport. The coach's check comes from Willow, but that all gets put in the formula anyways. The checks could all get written from the same school and then put in the formula and split evenly, but. That's not how it's been done.
So you're doing the fall?
I do the fall bus schedule, and then I manage volleyball and cross-country, Willow manages football. So they do all scheduling for football, cut the coaches' checks for football.
Do you do the scheduling for volleyball and cross-country?
Yes.
Okay, and then the winter, the boys and girls basketball?
I have both of them.
You take care of both of those, is there any other sports that hockey and?
And I, so I have all four in the winter.
And then in the spring, you take care of?
Just baseball.
But you're also coaching track?
Yeah.
Who's your AD?
Davis.
Okay, and Dave is the football coach in in Willow, who's his AD?
He is.
That seems odd.
Yeah, so like his review was done by Scott for all those years, you're giving a coach's review, done by the superintendent.
Then maybe we should talk about changing that, just for making things right, I mean, if he's gonna do you in track, then. You should probably be doing it.
But then add another layer, he's the head coach and I'm an assistant, so now I work under him on the field and over him when we're in the classroom, talking about the season. I don't know that I'd want that. I think the superintendent is very capable of doing it, it's a, it, there's a lot of schools that the AD is the football coach. Whether that's a decision you guys wanna stick with, I mean, Bram, he's the principal, the AD and the head football coach. And they're highly successful.
But he must have some evaluation.
Right, his superintendent probably.
You need to check into that.
Make sure that that's still happening, we gotta talk about that. And then the salaries, just for a point of discussion, unless you have something else on these numbers? Is the AD salaries?
I didn't know I wasn't supposed to do this, did you do a different one?
Well, let's make sure they're the same.
This is right from the AD's mall, so I didn't get them all.
Probably, it's the pre-temin version versus an AD version.
I just found, or he just, we ju- I just found out about it not that long ago, so I shot an email to all the Polar League ADs. I think he gave you, I haven't even seen it, we've done other schools outside of ours. So there's, there's not a wide discrepancy in the stipend that's paid out, which. We all interpret as our after-school responsibilities, and all schools are different, some schools you have to be at every single one. But if I look like a, like a Cromwell, they have eight volleyball games, four football games, ten basketball. And then nothing in the spring, whereas we have hot, you know, every school's different.
But they also last two forty-one instead of fifty-five.
Right. I think the biggest piece is the potential, you know. I- if there's a big difference is the time given, you know, Silver Bay, it's double the time that I do. As an example, um.
But is this also Rojak's time too?
His is in there separately.
Fifty minutes each?
Yeah.
And he's at fifty-five seventy-four, you're at fifty-four forty-two?
Only cause he's one year, we have a four-year pay scale and I'm not at the top yet, or a five-year pay scale.
But altogether, it's about eleven, you know, ten, about eleven thousand.
But then like, just, I don't know, like a comparable for me. Would be as an example, or is the one I was gonna use, like two harbors. So the stipend's lower than what you could argue Dave and I get combined, but he gets half his day to do all that work. And that's part of his, then salary. So you'd have to pull out all these numbers, if you wanted an actual round number, you'd have to go look at each contract and say, okay, the, you know. Dave is, I don't know if he's a master's teacher, I don't think he is, I don't think he has his masters. So you take his contract, times it by the fifty minutes, which is a seventh of the day. And then add that, and so he gets paid way less than I do technically, cause I'm on the teacher scale based on what I get paid. For that one seventh of the hour, at least that's how it's coded for Linda.
But let me get this straight again, you do all the fall except for football.
So we do, I, we do.
Do all the winter and our hockey.
We do six and six, give you the, the exact breakdown.
And that's for scheduling?
Yeah.
People will ask me, and they have asked me, why are we paying two salaries when we could have one, four less, just like all these other schools? Like, you know, and what you're saying is because of the amount of time that's being given, it's different.
So yeah, I would, you know, take some of these smaller schools out, like Cromwell's not a fair comparison, they have about half the sports that we do. Um, Esco gets fifty percent of their day and the stipend is similar. And they have probably ten more sports than we do, and I don't know their breakdown, when they co-op with, with, uh, Cloquet, who's really running that sport. He still has to manage his kids, you know, if they come from his building, I'm assuming it's, you know, similar to ours.
So he has four hours a day that he does nothing but AD work?
Yeah, yeah, like two, two harbors is an example, same thing, fifty percent, but they have twenty-one sport opportunities. We have fourteen, when you do boys, girls separately across the board.
You think it equates to four hours then, is it three hours plus a prep? It's three hours, he works three hours and then some prep.
Right, well, and and then of course it depends on the day breakdown, we're on trimester, so it's a little different.
But there's the argument, you have, we have fourteen, they have twenty-one and twenty-four, Esco, our two harbors, Esco.
Yeah, I would assume, uh, Esco has more opportunities, how many of those sports do they actually physically manage, I don't know. I'd have to ask them that exact number, because their boys soccer team is put on by Cloquet.
Because they don't play all sports together.
Right. They have, they have more than we do just Esco standing alone.
Well, I know they're graduating on their kids.
But they, you know, then they have all, you know, hockey, they play with, with Cloquet as the leader, I'm assuming. Boys soccer, tennis, I think, they offer boys and girls tennis through Cloquet, so they have.
That's cause that's where the twenty-one comes from.
Right. So what I'm getting at, or what I meant to say was, I think it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples, because let's just say the. The Esco AD is half AD and half testing coordinator, what if they put him on a principal type salary and he makes eighty grand a year? So now forty thousand of that can be coded under AD plus the stipend, that is double what me and Dave get.
If he did that, yeah.
Yeah, you know, if that's how it's broke, I don't know, I don't know what he makes, but it's something we could definitely find out. And again, Esco maybe isn't a great comparison, they have more than we do, as far as offerings.
And they're still playing in the same class as we are, they're one of the higher ones.
For some, yeah.
Do other sports cooperatives have two, like two ADs or some sports cooperatives are three times two, do you know that at all or?
I don't.
Okay, just curious.
It was hard to break down the cooperative to find out whether or not it was. Schools like us exactly, like one has enough to field teams, whether or what it's not.
Yeah.
It's hard to figure out from MSHSL.
But I, those numbers that I gave you, um. I just went through the four major sports, five actually, both basketballs. And the only way they'd be on this list is if they're two separate schools, otherwise it's not a cooperative, you know, you can have these. Janesville, Waldorf, Pemberton, it's not a cooperative, because it's all one name of probably three small towns, but a long time ago, they came together, there was one high school. But I went, and you have that information, correct? Yeah, so the, the number in parentheses is the exact number of total cooperatives in the entire sport across all classes.
Okay, so there's forty-four football cooperatives?
Correct, across the state in all classes.
How many are in football now, six, for, was it six A and now?
Yeah, I wish they had that number easy.
And you have the names of those?
Yeah.
And these are the s- ones that have two separate schools?
No, that's total, so then I went down and I counted sixteen other schools that across those same major sports have the exact same town name. Meaning they have to have two high schools co-opting and they're in those four major sports.
So sixteen like us?
Six, seventeen total, including us.
Can you send me that list? You were asking about what they are.
You can have this.
There's seventeen schools that have football, volleyball, basketball, basketball.
Yeah.
And that's that, or do you, you include baseball in that?
I, yep, same thing, I counted them all, they, seventeen of those schools have all five of those sports.
How about the others? Do you have a way of looking that up? I'm wondering, what I guess would be, what would be interesting to us, of those seventeen, how many have all of them? Besides these ones, uh.
Well, the seventeen have all of them, both seventeen schools owe all of them, sure.
Like we do.
Yeah, it would have just, yeah, I'd have to go through, cause I even called down there and the only page figured out, she said it's unfortunate. Because there's just so many cooperatives, and then like, here's my handwritten list, I found some that. Co-opted like four out of the five, but then baseball, softball, they, they split. But they were together in that, or vice versa, together in football, not together in basketball, but together in volleyball and. So then I didn't include them in the seventeen. So basically, out of all the data that I found, there are sixteen other schools just like us, at least they have the five major, the five majors.
It'd be nice to know if they offer the other minors.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know if they offer the minors and if they are, are together in those two.
My guess is they're together, but then maybe they're pulling in three other town teams with it too, you know, depending on where they are located.
Right.
Like a lot of these that come up, and this is just me knowing other sports. There's seven of them that I know every single sport is offered together, but then they also don't offer as much as we do, there's seven of these that all come up in section eight A. Up by Wheaton Herman, Badger, Green Bush, they're all the exact same co-ops across the board, Kitsen County Central. All of their sports are identical, with the two schools, sometimes three schools together, they also don't offer as much as we do.
But Kitsen County Central is one school.
It is two schools, it is Lancaster.
And they have their own high school?
They wouldn't be on this list if they didn't.
They have their own high school?
Yep.
And then Kitsen, I'm taking, I'm guessing.
Kitsen County was a combination of Kitsen and, I can't remember the name.
So there's three, those two combined, and then in sports, they bring in Lancaster.
Yeah, so Kitsen Central High School and then Lancaster, and that's where they come up with Kitsen County Central. Yeah, so it's Kitsen, Kitsen Central High School.
That's impressive.
That was fast, say a three minutes fast. Any other, basically, any questions about that? What is the other cost for the, um, not under the liaison, what is those, what do you mean by the dues, memberships, athletic director expenses, et cetera?
That's what's gonna go sport by sport. When we host, well, we host volleyball, so when Becky puts in for her coaches. Association reimbursement, her two hundred dollar cap for her clinic that we chose to do a couple of years ago, Moose Lake is paying for that. And then the idea is that six and six across the board, it should be equal, yeah.
Can we find out that number, Bob?
Say that again, which numbers can you?
To make sure there's not, it's not, um, it's not like this transportation one, should be fifty-fifty above across. There's twenty-one thousand that is spent on, on the liaison stuff for whatever you call it, our, the sports we take care of. Be nice to know how much is on the other side.
Is every sport doing that?
Yeah, all the ones that I manage do, I put in my track one through Willow and get a check, reimbursement back. I can't say if softball and golf and they should be, we announce it, it's something we expect coaches to be nominating, so I'm. I can say that the eight sports that I cover, all coaches are in the association, and when they go to clinics, they get it covered. Um, and they mostly go to clinics.
The only numbers we didn't cover are the ones that, I didn't, we didn't talk about that, we're, we're in single A, but we're allowing to be in single A, that's track and field this year. Track and field this year, we have forty girls and boys, Willow River has eleven.
Yeah.
So that's seventy-eight percent to twenty-one, and then the cross-country, or did we talk about that?
A little bit, yeah.
That's twenty-six and they have two, okay. Is there anything else that we're in, single A, besides volleyball next year?
No.
So the number that was talked about in the paper is the one that's farthest to the right, when the, all the sports are combined.
And seven through twelve, so nine through twelve, they have twenty-five percent, or basically twenty-six percent.
Yes.
And then when they added seven through eight, cause that was the original sheet that I sent you, that came out to be about the exact same, twenty-six and seventy-four.
But that's for all the sports, but there are several obviously that we go through, because there are. There, it's not even near twenty-six percent. Track and field, baseball, golf.
Cross-country.
Cross-country, volleyball. Not twenty-six percent, okay. Anything else from Tony, anyone else? Thank you for reading all these numbers. I think it'll be good to bring this to the board for discussions, to things to talk about the numbers, if there's anything concerning for the other board members. Um, but it's also good to probably put a kibosh to these. Less than ten purposes nasty emails that don't have a lot of the facts in there. People are more than welcome to do that, it's good that we have communication, but it'd be nice if we could have meetings before. anybody jumps to the gun and talk about all of these kinds of things.
We did put it out on Facebook, just so you know, that it was, um, big picture, look at the cooperative. And we're gonna, on the twenty-second, you're gonna have an agenda item that's basically what is our commitment to the cooperative.
And everybody knows, a lot of it has to do with the facilities.
I think we started after you guys had that meeting that I think Jamie and I both missed. Couple weeks ago, and that's when I started worrying from people.
No, um, at that school, we had, uh, Willow River, they agreed that volleyball would be, complete volleyball would be in our school. And then, when they left, they said they were gonna discuss it again. So where are we with that, because they did say.
They were gonna take it to their board.
Take it to them. Okay, but the, the group that was here had agreed, but it was everybody. It was school boards.
In the end, yeah, uh.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm confused, because they said it, and then they changed their mind, so can we get a clarification on that? Because they agreed that night that volleyball would all be up.
I think they agreed that practice would all be up, they were just okay with saying, yeah, it makes sense that seventh and eighth grade will now practice. And then when discussing games, they said, we're gonna take that to our board.
And we would still have to discuss how that would look anyway, because of that one gap, with that one team or time. Sometimes they play the same nights, sometimes they don't, where would this one be and where would that one be? Because we, we didn't talk about what may or may not happen with this other gym down here, and having it in close proximity to our other school.
Right.
But, we don't know about that until after next year anyway.
And I guess in, in looking at all this information, the only concern I would have would be the golf at this time.
I would concern what golf.
So I would like to see if maybe in a couple of years we can petition down.
Yeah, I can definitely look into it, because right now, once your, your two-year cycle is set, the only way you've changed classes is a change in co-op, period. Or a school dissolves, and then it doesn't exist anymore.
And had we been meeting earlier, I would've definitely had a lot of concerns about the baseball. It was only fifteen percent five years ago, fifteen percent four years ago, fifteen percent three years ago, last year was twenty-three. But still not, the prerequisite should be thirty-five percent, that's kind of the number that compared to what we have eligible, and they have eligible, the team should be made up of thirty-five percent. And then this year was twenty-eight, it's actually a little less, because the one is gone. But that's one of the other ones that I, I just have, I have concerns about trying to compete at that level with that low of a.
I completely hear what you're saying, the only problem with using thirty-five as the round number is what if, what if the, the junior class has sixty percent girls and forty percent boys, then suddenly that baseball number drops. That's just another factor, like, you're right.
I think that should be looked into, yeah.
Based on total numbers, thirty-five percent of our teams should be fielded by Willow River, if you just wanna use straight numbers. But, then you break out classes by boys and girls, and you're breaking down boys and girls sports, and that changes everything.
And the numbers will, have them flow from your tier.
Correct.
It'd be nice if we, hmm, feature exactly what they're gonna be.
Well, this year, the junior from Willow is twenty-five boys, twelve girls.
Yeah.
And there's more girls playing in the sports than boys.
There you go.
But, why should ours, which is not that way, it's about the same? Being, being for all intents and purposes, what I call penalized, because how do you compete if you don't get the prerequisite amount of kids to compete at that level, that's, that's, that's just my concern. The other numbers, you know, some of, the only, our junior high is the same way, we've got the fifty percent more boys than girls. But all the other ones after that, they're pretty much. Anything else?
No, I definitely think we should look to petition down though, when that occurs and be aware of that. I think that our, with our kids, there's no way you can compete against our own halls. Golf and stuff, that's.
And I think I would've been doing that if I had known about it five years ago, baseball.
Yeah, I, yes, I, I think there's some.
Three kids doesn't cut it.
Nope.
That's just not enough when we're putting in twenty-five. Just a point of discussion for the board.
So I will look at what are actual qualifications to even petition.
Yeah, that would be good.
You know, because when, like, we talked about hockey last time, and they say non-competitive, like Becker Bigley, is a classic. But, non-competitive meaning they win three games a year, we're not doing that in any of our sports. I mean, on a consistent basis, yes, we've had a few rough patches here and there, but, I mean, if you're gonna use baseball as an example, we go five hundred almost every year. And so then maybe we don't fit what they consider non-compete, but I don't know.
It would matter who you're playing and who you're.
Could, would, could we actually produce true numbers of, these are the boys from Willow? I don't know if that's even a requirement that they'll even look at, they might just scoff and say, you, you guys go five hundred and you chose to be in the co-op, that's my, that might be what they say.
But it also would matter who you're playing too. Like if you.
We're still gonna play in our conference.
Right, but, there's other ones too, you know.
Yeah.
But you just find out.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, who knows? That three-school hockey team playing in a single A was kind of a real loop for everybody. It got everybody, I know it got me thinking.
Yeah.
I think it got every school in the state thinking, when they saw that, that fifteen hundred enrollment school playing in a single A hockey and getting second place.
Of the sixteen teams there, they were the third largest school.
Yeah.
Total.
And if anybody's wheels weren't spinning, I don't think they were paying attention as an A D and or anybody who's watching sports on what else is going on. Anything more?
No, it's just good to look at numbers every once in a while and update stuff, and then, you know, and the high school league makes changes every once in a while too. But it's good to see if we're all at the same kind of, uh, level and give our kids the best chance they can.
So do you guys need any more data before you bring it back to the board, because?
There was a couple of things.
Okay, yeah, and I, I have one thing here that you had talked to me about, but.
Is that this coming Monday?
Yes.
I think just things that we had talked about and all.
Okay.
Email in, see what you come up with and.
Sure.
Go ahead and see the track.
Yep.
All right? There's any further, we'll close this meeting, seven fifty-eight.